This is the regular meeting of the Kanioei Neighborhood Board for October, and we are in session. Unfortunately, we do not have quorum quite yet, but I am interested to know if there are people from the community that are interested in serving on three vacancies that we have, Sub District 2, 13, and 14. Anyone interested in serving in those sub districts, 12, 13, 14? Hearing none, moving on. Next are the City State Community Monthly Reports. First up, Honolulu Fire Department.
Hi, good evening. My name is Captain Glenn Camp from the Kanioei Fire Station. Here's your statistic for the month of September. We had no structure fires, no wildland fires, two nuisance fires, no cooking fires, and four activated alarms. Hundred and forty-eight medical emergencies, zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians. We had seven motor vehicle crashes, one mountain rescue, no ocean rescues, and no hazardous materials incidents. So your fire safety tip is with the holiday season just around the corner, consider fire-resistant, non-cobustable decorations. Choose only underwriters laboratory-approved electrical decorations, and follow manufacturer's instructions for installation and load. Use lights that are in good repair. Always turn lights off before leaving your home or going to bed. Do not overload power strips, surge protectors, or extension cords. Never leave candles unattended, and secure lighters and matches out of reach of children. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Honolulu Fire Department? Hearing done. It strikes me funny when you say "don't overload", and I can't tell you how many times I've seen an extension cord with every puka filled, and then one puka with another extension cord attached to it.
Yeah.
That means overload.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Honolulu Police Department.
Officer Cruz, District 4 Community Policing Team.
Sorry, no, um, yeah.
Somebody there?
I just want to introduce myself. I'm Lieutenant Villaflor, one of three lieutenants that kind of patrol the area. And Officer Cruz is part of our CPT team, and they answer all your questions. I'm just here to observe. Yeah, Lieutenant Villaflor. Villaflor, yeah. Well, we always refer, these guys are boots-on-the-ground running, they handle everything.
Are you assigned here now?
I'm assigned, we, the entire, from Kukuku to Waimea. Yes. But, so I'll leave it to Officer Cruz.
Yeah, got it.
So for this, I'm gonna go over the stats for District 4 Kanioei. This month, motor vehicle thefts, we had one. The previous month, we had zero. Burglaries, we had one in September for the previous month. Thefts, we had eleven this month, or September, and twelve last month. Car break-ins, UEMVs, we had one, we had three last month, and one robbery, and one last month. Any questions?
Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department?
Chair.
See Mr. Sakamoto and Mr. Flytel? Go ahead, Mr. Sakamoto.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Lieutenant. Donald Sakamoto, board member. On October 12th, Sunday, I called 911 to report the high-speed, noisy vehicles on H3 at 12:52. It took about 2:02. When I talked to the 911 person, they said they knew about it. So I just wanted to know if you folks got a report on that day, on that morning, actually.
I can go look it up. That was October 12th.
12:52 a.m., and then it took about 2:02 before they turned around by exit 11 by H3 Kamia Me Highway, going back to Alava.
Yeah, I can go look it up, see if we responded, yeah.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Flytel?
Yes, Lieutenant, thank you for your report. I have a few questions, a couple of comments in your report. Were there any teenagers stopped for illegally driving EVs or motorbikes or scooters without helmets this past month in this area?
In Kanioei, our team has not.
In Kanioei, yes.
Yeah. I think what needs to happen is, I mean, this is the difficulty, is there's, they're not defined, and there's no, as far as those electric, see, we defined electric bicycles. We didn't define electric motorcycles, dirt bikes, off-road vehicles, and then we didn't establish penalties for them being on the road. So typically, we'll cite them. If it's reckless, we'll do reckless. We can take the bike away. Obviously, you know, at one point in time, we had a plainclothes operation. I mean, these are juveniles. When we try, attempt to stop them, they'll just take off on us, and it creates a dangerous environment for pretty much everybody involved. So in a plain, you know, when we're doing these operations, we'll just follow them, wait till they stop. But you can see the difficulty in that.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. I would, I'd like to say that I can stand out on the corner where the police station is at 7:10 in the morning and have counted four students on their way to Castle, no helmets, no helmets, no registration. So those are, the law is that unless you're 18, you have to wear a helmet. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So I, you can go right out the front door of the police department in District 24. That's number one. You could catch two or three daily at the McDonald's right near Castle. So it's, in those, in that case, they're stopped. But I just, I want to add to that, the problem we're having within the the city of Kanioei, if you will, is excessive speeding and a general disregard for the law. Illegal left turns, nobody stopping right turn on red, driving up the median to take a left-hand turn because you don't want to wait in traffic. These are common occurrences, and so my question is, what specific things can you, not you personally, but District 24, the police department, do to try and do something to increase enforcement of the laws on the books to help what is an ever-increasing problem in our neighborhood?
Well, in our district, we've implemented, you know, we're allocating resources to specifically target these, you know, traffic enforcement. We've opened up projects for us to do those things. So if Kanioei needs more focus, we can start doing that, too. A lot of, we have people, especially today, we're doing distracted driving operations in Kailua and Kanioei. I think accountability is the issue here. I mean, you can write so many citations, but we have to start changing behavior.
Well, I understand your point. I know that the deputy chief makes the same statement. We're not going to solve the problem by enforcement. However, I would beg to differ just a little bit because if we wait for everybody to get their head on straight, we're not going to solve the problem either.
Yes, that's why we've, exactly, that's why we've ramped up enforcement.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I do appreciate that. Whatever you can do.
Anything else?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Honolulu Police Department? And I'll just, I'll just piggyback a little bit on that. Lately, I've been driving a lot in town, and it's just as bad there. So I think it's, whether it's an enforcement issue or whether people just need to start understanding that there are rules and then there are consequences, and I think that's the only thing that makes people understand, if they're not doing it on their own, we have to help them do it. And that's enforcement. So mahalo. Next, oh, thanks very much, Honolulu Police Department.
You're welcome.
Next, Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Shut down?
Federal.
What?
Federal shutdown.
It's not shut down. Well, military people are working.
Probably not, probably not all.
Okay, Christie's civilian. Yeah, okay, got it. No military reps on the, online? Okay, moving along. Winward Community College, in the prime spot up front. Okay, moving on to board briefs and discussion. The first thing we have is the Ho'omalohia Long Range Plan, and Jocelyn, people are standing up. This is a good thing. Excellent.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, board members. Thank you for our time tonight, and thank you for the service you give to our community. It's always very appreciated as a city employee, very much so. I'm Jocelyn Sand, and I'm the Director of Honolulu Botanical Gardens. And just as background, the gardens are administered under the Department of Parks and Recreation, and they include Ho'omalohia, Foster, Lilio Kalani, Oko Crater, and Wahihua Botanical Gardens. Altogether, our five gardens cover 650 acres and conserve over 5,000 plant species from Hawaii and around the world. And our diverse plant collection is not only beautiful, but is also used for botanical research and public education. We welcome close to 1 million visitors each year, and in last fiscal year, we offered over 200 classes, hosted 30 special events, issued 3,000 public permits for things like weddings, tours, camping, facility use, and fishing. And we also operate the Honolulu Recreational Community Gardening Program with 11 locations islandwide where residents can garden together for a small fee that just helps offset water costs. We just celebrated our 50th anniversary of that program, and in November, the Kanioei Community Garden is going to reopen after a complete redesign, and with sweeping views of the Ko'olau's, I can arguably say that it is going to be the most beautiful community garden in the country. But I am a biased resident, so, but go see for yourself. So tonight, I just want to share briefly information about our upcoming community workshop that'll be held here at Winward Community College in Haleakoa on Thursday, November 6th, from 6:30 to 8:30. The doors will open at 6:00 p.m., so folks can look at our posters, get settled, talk story a bit before we start. This will be the first community discovery workshop to launch our long-range planning process for Ho'omalohia. I want to emphasize, this is just a listening and learning event. No plans have been made, no decisions will be made that night. It's really about gathering community input, hearing ideas, and opening and engaging in ongoing conversation with the community. There will be multiple chances to participate throughout the planning process, and all materials will be available on our city website, they're already up, and under our DPR Ho'omalohia webpage. There'll also be updates through the city's social medias, press releases, and at the garden sites. As you probably know, Ho'omalohia's popularity has grown tremendously. We had a record 724,000 visitors last year. The garden opened 43 years ago and has never gone through a master planning process. Our staffing levels are basically the same as they were when we opened our doors in 1982, with just one new position added in 2023. Yet, we're offering more classes, tours, family activities than ever before, and the maturing garden and aging facilities require significantly more maintenance and care. Our staff is doing an incredible job, but we've reached a point where we need to take a step back and plan thoughtfully. This is our opportunity to work with the community to define what we want Ho'omalohia to be, a place of peace and enjoyment where we care for our land and create something we can be proud of for our future generations. Mahalo for letting me share tonight, and I hope to see you at the workshop. We hope to make it a fun experience, and I look forward to sharing more about this at future Neighborhood Board meetings as we continue the process over the upcoming year. In addition to the flyer, you'll also see the process there, where we are in the stages and how we're going to have public meetings and the timeline there, and that's also on the website. And lastly, the Kanioei community for the robust participation in our survey that we launched regarding our weekly day of closure for Ho'omalohia. We heard from 3,500 people, which is really a lot for a survey, and we were going to choose whether it's Tuesday and Thursday, and I can share with you that Thursday was the overwhelming choice. Seventy-six percent of the vote went for Thursday. So that closure will take effect on Thursday, January 8th, 2026, so we have lots of time to get that word out. And before I close, I would be remiss to not acknowledge and thank Councilmember Esther Kiaaina. The funding for this long-range plan, along with over $3.5 million additional for deferred maintenance, has been, has made it possible for Ho'omalohia to completely re-roof every facility building in the campus. So it's 18 roofs in November. Bear with us, we're going to be doing a road repave. We're going to widen wherever we can between streams and terrain to get it wider for pedestrians, wider for bicycles. That'll be happening in November, and then we also were able to get this long-range plan funded. And it was Esther's vision of earmarking $4 million out of the transit accommodation tax, natural resource portion of that fund, which is to offset areas like beaches and parks that have been impacted by tourism. So this is a perfect alignment of funding intention and a project, and she's all for us, and she's always there to support us. So Esther, we thank you deeply. So if you have any questions, let me know, and I look forward to circling back as things keep going, and I hope you can join us on November 7th.
Any questions from the board? Donald?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Donald Sakamoto, as a blind individual, I just want to know, how do you accommodate people with blindness at your park? Do you have stuff in braille as well as other means of helping people to go around the park and describe the park?
There are braille signs on all the facilities marking them, and there are some braille signs on our most-used Ethnobotany Trail by the Education Center. But thank you for sharing that, that's something that we can increase, and what a perfect time to bring it up as we're launching on this plan. That's something we will definitely build in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking on your flyer. There are four bulleted points: enhance visitor experience, engage the community, provide accessibility, Donald, preserve environmental, cultural, historical resources, provide botanical facility development. Are these the main points that are going to be discussed at the opportunity to share and learn?
Those will be discussed, but it is certainly not limited to that. This is a very much engaged, open conversation. Everything's on the table. That is just to give you some idea of points that we highlighted in the scope of work to center the project, to center the consultants, and to give an idea of our intentions and where we're going with it in case people had, you know, initial, you know, curiosity about that. But it isn't known, it isn't limited to that by any means.
And then when, there's a section down here, it says "come, listen, review, and learn", then offer your input.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay, so there'll be presentations, and then?
Yes, it's, it's-
And then, and then breakouts?
Yes, very good question. There's going to be arrival time. The doors will open at 6:00 p.m. This is going to be facilitated by Ecologic. Miranda Foley's here with us tonight, and you'll enter the room, and we'll be able, we'll have, be able to engage with staff, look at poster sessions, look at information, talk story, and then we'll have about, at 6:30, we'll start it up. From 6:30 to 7:00, they'll be giving you some presentation and background, and then at 6:30, we will break out into six different area sessions. You'll be able to move between the different sessions, the different sections, and there'll be staff members and community members there to talk you through things and get your input and kind of prompt discussion at those tabling events. And then about 8:20, we will gather back together, do some wrap-up commentary, and then pow at 8:30.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is an Empty Homes Tax Resolution.
Aloha, Chair.
Aloha.
Hi. Chair, is it okay if I share my screen?
Please.
Thank you. One second, please. Now, thank you, Chair. Thank you for community. Thank you for inviting me. My name is Ross Isokane. I serve on the Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board, but I'm here today as a volunteer advocate for the Empty Homes Tax. Now, I know this is a pretty engaged community, so you're probably familiar, but I'll give a quick overview. You know, I'm aiming for three minutes, so let's, let's, let's roll here. Now, here we go. We all recognize we're in a housing crisis. One in four homes sold goes to outside investors, and they're not renting these to residents. They're using them as vacation homes, short-term rentals. How is that helping? In a crisis, we have to be biased toward action, but I know there are skeptics. I mean, really, who wants more taxes? Not me. I'm from a traditional conservative family. I have an accounting and business background. However, I recognize things are getting worse, not better. More of our young adults are moving to the mainland, or maybe they're still living at home with you because they can't afford anything else. And while we have to build more, also realize that the free market has failed us because rather than building affordable, all we see is luxury towers rising into the sky and more of our kama'a get priced out. Now, with the Empty Homes Tax, there is wide support. Seven other Neighborhood Boards have already signed on. A recent survey said 74% of Oahu residents are favorable. The opposition, it's generally who you'd expect, conservative think tanks, developers, real estate associations, and others who profit from transactions to outsiders. I want to use this opportunity to quickly go through some of the opposition's talking points. Number one, we hear this a lot, the only solution is to build. But even Josh Green said, "Building alone isn't going to get us out of this crisis." Two, you know, you can't tell me what to do with my property. This is unconstitutional. But this isn't a prohibition. It's not a mandate. We've always taxed different property classes at different rates. Three, it's too hard to enforce. But the city's just going to start with self-declarations. Just check a box. Is it your home, your long-term rental, or is it vacant? That's not too hard. Four, but we have a valid reason, so this is unfair. Well, the current bill actually has over 15 exemptions designed to protect residents. They even exempted a second home for locals, no tax. But investors who own three, four, five homes that are vacant, those might get taxed. Okay, so I'm going to move to the last slide here. This is about keeping Hawaii homes for Hawaii families. If we don't act, we'll all lose to outside interests. As a reminder, one in four homes sold during this crisis is going to outsiders. Can you imagine if we were in a drought or famine and 25% of our food or water got shipped to outside investors? If our elected officials did nothing and allowed this to continue, there'd be people calling for criminal charges. But the Empty Homes Tax can help. I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, the floor is open for discussion. Board? Mr. Sakamoto?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Donald Sakamoto. We, I'm just concerned if somebody has a home, I think we had a resident before about this, and they inherited their mother's house, and they live on the mainland, and they rented out to some students to, you know, rent the student, and they couldn't get them out, and they caused a lot of damage. So the tenant owner does not want to rent it out anymore, so how would that affect? Is there some kind of exemption for those kind of people who don't want to rent their house?
And Chair, I'd be happy to answer. Just let me know back to the floor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. You know, no, thank you, Board Member Sakamoto, for your question. As I've been reading the bill, there is an exemption for a second dwelling if it was actually owned by a person who, who owned the property 25 years ago. So I think in the case that you're describing, since it was inherited by a person who originally owned the home when they passed away, our council members actually built in exemption just for this case. So my short answer is no, that would not be taxed, even if they wanted to leave the vacant.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Neil.
Question, I, as much as I might agree to a quote-unquote, just for want of a moniker, residential AA tax rate a little higher, Andy, I'm sure would appreciate that. I do not see the connection to how that solves our housing crisis for made-of whines or people in need of a house, a middle-class person or a young couple. How does that help them? Because you're making a connection that I don't see it.
Yeah, and just to, oh, I'm sorry, just to respond, I mean, this housing crisis is, has been going on for decades. And it's not just, we don't just need housing at the lower tiers. We need housing at all tiers. I mean, middle-class tiers and even workforce housing. So we truly believe that this bill is meant to design to get homes that are currently not being rented, not being occupied, into the possession, either by ownership or by rental, for residents. So, you know, if those rentals, if these are residential aid properties and they're being rented by, you know, a good middle-class family, that's still going to help with the housing crisis. So that's, that's my short answer. I'll stop there.
Uh, thank you. We don't have quorum, so we won't be able to move this forward, but before we move on to the next topic, Andy, do you have, Andy, do you have any comments?
Chair Andy Koano, Director of Budget and Fiscal Services. You know, that bill is actually up for third reading, and it's been up for third reading since December of 2024. I, in my mind, the council is split, essentially split 5-4, and I think, I think before we get to concluding on that tax, we should, we should have a permitted interaction group to discuss not just that bill, but all active bills outstanding because I think there's the different ways, different ways to skin the cat. You know, instead of having one bill that will tax homeowners that theoretically have an empty home, we have other mechanisms that we can use to encourage homeowners to rent, provide affordable rentals. And actually, Councilmember Kiaina is working on a bill with us to actually do that. And this bill is meant to allow homeowners in residential aid classification to apply for dedication, five-year dedication for residential rates if they rent the home to a, to a family or person at rental rates based on HUD HUD rent charge limits based on bedroom count. So, you know, this, this would in effect provide a benefit to the renter to be able to rent at rates that are affordable. One thing that the study that we did notate was that when ENY did their heat map of where these theoretical empty, empty units or empty homes, whether condo or non-condo, you know, single-family residential, are located, when you look at the heat map, most of the concentration is in Kaka'ako, you know, that area, Alamoana. And, yeah, what's, what happens is that, for the most part, a lot of those units are not affordable and, you know, will not really help to solve the problem. So our administration wants to focus on looking at myriad approaches to address the problem because it's, it's not, that's not the silver bullet, right? That may be one part of the solution, but we should look at everything in totality, including looking at the real property tax rate structure. Right now, we have residential, residential aid. I believe Maui County has owner-occupied, non-owner-occupied, and maybe we should change to that kind of setup, and then add in, you know, lower rates for homes used for rentals. So there's, we need to look at it more- So there's, we, we, we need to look at it more, um, very broadly, not, not just through one bill. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair Shizuma, uh, just wanted to thank the author of the reso, uh, presenting that. I, and also, um, to Andy for his, um, response. I definitely think, uh, if we did have quorum, it'd probably still vote, even though I agree, there's other methods and other tools that can be utilized, um, still to express the desire of the board. If we felt, so felt that we supported it, it would be nice to vote on it. So I just want to appreciate, um, the author for writing this up, um, and, and also for the response.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for presenting. We don't have quorum, so we're not gonna be able to move this one forward this month. So, uh, we have the information that we need. We'll, uh, get the board together next month. Thanks very much.
Mahalo, appreciate it.
You bet. Moving on to resident community concerns. Uh, there's one that was brought forward, the Haiku Road Kahuhipa Street, needing a safety survey. And it kind of goes with what Neil was talking about, with people driving just exactly the, the way they want to drive, when they want to drive and how they want to drive, and people speeding up and down those streets. There's a little, there's a couple of schools there on both sides of, uh, Kahikili Highway. And when people are, uh, wanting to get where they want to go ten seconds faster, they put a lot of people in danger. This is a Department of Transportation and a city and county. It's a DTS and a DOT thing because of the, the, the streets that are involved. My question is, before we get to the community concern, does the DOT and DTS get together for things like this? When intersections intersect? I, I would, I agree with the, uh, the lady who had sent this community concern forward that it's an extremely dangerous intersection, the one that's closest to Target by the elementary school, and the one coming off of Haiku Road down to Kahikili Highway. I don't know exactly, I'm not a traffic specialist, so I don't know what they do, but if they could do something and just take a look and let, let us know what could be done to maybe, uh, strengthen the safety there. Laura?
Comment. So, um, the, the woman who emailed me with her concern was also concerned about the need for a crosswalk on Kahuhipa between those two points that I had taken that, um, screenshot for you, and wondering if speed humps, especially a speed hump under the crosswalk, and just a few more. So that Kahuhipa Street is so busy, packed full of, um, condos, townhouses. So the number of parked cars on the street, it's hard to even get out of a driveway without poking your, the, the nose of your car almost halfway into the lane. And then we've, we've asked about City Mill, that those driveways, the entrance and exit to that, for a number of times that something could be done to mark even that off, and we've not been successful there, so, thanks.
Can I, can I answer that? So first of all, thank you for the community concern, and, um, I got your email. So we are putting in, um, a, a request for investigative services. The Windward Mall, um, uh, itself had asked for, um, a side, um, not a sidewalk, uh, crosswalk between the two. You know, that, uh, what is that road called? Uh, A'lo'lo? The one that, um, uh, because it's, it's been requested, so, um, and, Andy, you might want to help me, because we, um, you know, I meet periodically with the staffer who's charged with that, and we have found, um, we have not gotten responses, uh, from the Department of Transportation Services as efficiently as all of the other, um, agencies. And I know they're, uh, quite busy, but this is a matter of public safety and should be prioritized. So, uh, because it has been flagged, I can, I, I will make sure that at the next neighborhood board meeting, I'll be able to at least update you. They go through a process for assessment. In this case, if it was a neighborhood, they would have to do a petition to get a certain percentage of all of the addresses to, uh, support it. In this case, it's a lot of businesses, so it would have to be businesses, and then they would like the support of the neighborhood board. So at that point, if they do the assessment and determine that it is meritorious and warranted, then they're, they're going to create the petition with all of the appropriate addresses that will be necessary to, to support it. And I will work closely with you on that front.
Thank you. Excellent progress. Any other community concerns?
Mr. Chair, Mauricio Muñoz, I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to speak to you earlier, but, uh, rather than go on, I could ask you or your emergency prep committee, if you got, uh, correspondence from Vibrant Hawaii about a symposium in November on, uh, okay, well, if you were gonna include that in your, uh, report, uh, then I don't have to say anything. Oh, okay. And, um, how about a survey regarding, um, community awareness of our community? Did you get any notice about that? No? Uh, okay, well, I have it for you later, okay, and I distribute it to the, uh, members of the audience already. Two things that are going down, uh, one is, basically, it's, um, the effort of our communities in Ko'olau, all the way up and down, to, uh, develop resilience hubs. Ha'ula is our strongest development community. Uh, there are things going on here in Kani'ohe, in Ka'ila, in Wa'amanalo, ah, so much in Kahalou, but, uh, nonetheless, it's there. And, um, Vibrant Hawaii, which began on the Big Island, uh, over the pet lap, six years ago now, has organized, uh, thirty-some-odd hubs around the Big Island, associating, um, various groups that would help each other out in an emergency response. In blue skies, which means good weather, they serve as community basis for education and development of community resilience, uh, and preparation and response. So anyway, um, that got introduced to us, uh, primarily in Ko'olau, not the whole, but in Ko'olau. We'd be in our second year now. And, uh, they're moving along with this survey, which I have given to the audience, and I'll distribute to the board members. It's only for us, uh, uh, Ko'olau residents, okay? And what they're trying to do is, in their base step, is get an idea of how aware or unaware are we about our community and its needs and its resilience? So that's one thing. The second thing, and I'm really sorry you didn't get a notice about this, um, there is a, some, the second, uh, symposium for the Ko'olau, uh, region, as well as state agencies involved in emergency preparedness and response, okay? And that's here, um, it's, but we don't have it, but I only got a couple, so that's it.
Where is it and when is it?
November, uh, fourteenth, uh, nine to two at, um, Windward, right? Yahoo! Thank you, thank you, Windward, which is vital to our, uh, community.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Uh, as everybody can see from our last tsunami warning, that our emergency preparedness needs work, and anything that we can do to start making that happen more efficiently, uh, is gonna be a boon for residents. Boon. B-O-O-N. That's your word for the day. Boon.
Are they in? What is it? Right? One of our board members? Yeah, did that make my name? Good.
Oh, Council Member Kiana, uh, there's a question for you in the chat. It says, this is from Que'Kuitis, sorry if I said the last name wrong, board member. Going back to the Kohipua and Haiku, is there a possibility to get a speed red light camera at the intersections of Huipua, Kahuhipa, and Kahakili, and Haiku, Kahakili, uh, so much people run the light there?
There's like five or six cars go through that light when it turns red.
Okay, I know Irene, um, from my office is online, and, um, I'll be honest with you, I get requests all the time. I cannot keep track. But in this case, there will be an intersection between the state, um, and the, um, county. And so, uh, we will follow up on that as well. So thank you for, uh, raising that in the chat box.
Mahalo. Any other community concerns? Alrighty.
Oh, I'm Lisa Uasato from Windward Neighborhood Security Watch Coordinators Group. And I'd just like to let everyone know that this Saturday on October eighteenth at Kani'ohe District Park, on the pool side, we'll have the Malama nine-six-seven-four-four. That's graffiti paintout and community cleanup. And it's an excellent event for everyone, and especially youth, because they can get community service. And all of the equipment is provided and is well-organized. So it starts at eight AM to noon, and registration is from seven-thirty to eight AM. So everyone is welcome. October eighteenth, Saturday, at Kani'ohe District Park, Poolside. Thank you.
Mahalo. I'm gonna have to change board briefs and discussion to board briefs and announcements. Time for elected officials. Where? Hi. Good. You want to come out of turn and do your thing? Here comes Windward Community College.
Oh my God, Ko'ola, thanks for having Neighborhood Board here. It's so great to be able to leave my office and roll down the hill. I've got just three things tonight. I wanted to follow up on the Paniolo BBQ. It was so fun. There were so many people from the community. I couldn't believe how many people, it was the first time they rode a horse. I also couldn't believe how many people put their toddlers on a horse they never knew. But that, it was really fun. I'm thankful for the, for the Neighborhood Board for getting the word out, and for some of you for attending. We just had a great time in our first event, and we even made a little bit, it was not primarily to raise funds. It was to invite the community on campus. Almost everything was free, but we made enough to break even in a little bit. So I believe we're gonna do it again next year, as long as my staff is willing. So get ready to come on out again next semester and saddle up. The mechanical bull, unfortunately, it takes so long for UH to procure things that by the time we got through the PO, someone had gone in and reserved it with a credit card. So there was no mechanical bull. There was like human bowling, which was scary, and I didn't do, because I'm afraid of vomiting in a ball and then have it slosh all over me. But there was, there were a lot of different things to do, and I apologize about the, um, misadvertisement of the mechanical bull. It was a good faith effort. Um, so that's Paniolo BBQ, thank you. Today, we had two-hundred-and-thirty-three kaiapuni Hawaiian language and Hawaiian culture-based school students on our campus, and we practiced for Makahiki. And it was so much joy. It was just great to see all these students, and they really went at it. And our own middle college, Halahu'e Kili, which is part of Ka'ila, on our campus two days a week, pursuing the Hawaiian Knowledge Innovation Certificate. And in the community with Purple Mya Foundation, one day a week, they were the winners. So Windward Community College won on so many levels today, but we were really thankful. It's so great to see the campus being utilized like a college campus again, and inspiring education, and making our local students feel that they belong in college and that college is relevant to what they do. So super excited. And then the last thing to announce is craziness. Because of the need for a tech upgrade, our whole entire register, our whole entire student record system is down from December eleventh, the night of December eleventh, through January second to the sixth, depending on your role, which is prime time when our students are registering for full semester. So my ask is, if you know someone who wants to be a student, they need twelve, so we can get them through the process, which should be super easy, because it's community college, but there's some things, like health clearances, that can slow it down. But also, if they're a current student, encourage them to register right away when it opens November tenth, not to wait. If they're trio students, they can start November third. We want them to get in, because the other thing is, we have to cancel our low-enrolled classes before December eleventh this year, because everything is down, which means if students aren't in classes, the classes they want will get canceled. They won't be waiting for them come January, right before school starts. So that's super important. Couple things to note with that. Earlier registration does not mean earlier billing. No matter when you register, your bill comes due at the same time. So it's not gonna be a financial burden, or any more of a financial burden, for them to register. In fact, they'll know what classes they need, how much they're taking, and have some time to search for resources. And the second thing is, if they register before Thanksgiving holidays, we are going to have a concert on the Great Lawn featuring Chardonnay, whose crew includes Rainbow Uli'i, the director of Key Project in Kahalou, and then the, eight oh eight, the vitals. So, um, free tickets to every student who registers, and with availability, we'll give them an extra so they can bring a friend, who should register too, of course. So we're trying to make it a little bit of fun to get in early, but also, it's a really serious thing. It's not the best timing to take down all of your student records when they're registering. So we're just trying to really foresee those issues and make sure that we remain stable and that our students continue on their college trajectory and don't end up with a semester that doesn't serve them. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Great job on the rodeo. Question. Uh, next up, our, our elected officials. Rachel, go ahead and play the elected officials music. No? Okay.
Yeah, so Sakamoto, thank you, Chair. Uh, I, I have a question. Concerning the, uh, federal government budget cuts, uh, has that affected the Windward Community College? I know Manoa has some funding there, but has it affected, uh, your college?
Okay, so that's a downer after my three announcements, but it's an honest downer, and I thank you for asking it, Mr. Sakamoto. You always ask the hard-hitting questions. We're down seven million dollars. And just to give you an idea, that's about half of my annual budget that's not grant-related. We use a prime, we primarily use grants for student support and student services. We use it for our incarcerated program. Title III, which is US Department of Education funding for Native Hawaiians-serving institutions, which has never been used exclusively for Native Hawaiians. It's been used to build our capacity as a college to serve our community, especially Native Hawaiians. But everyone benefits from these fundings. Through the, um, court case with Yale and the others, where it was decided that preferential remit of action was no longer possible, they're utilizing that to, they ended all of our Title III grants. This year's not as painful, because they're allowing us, if we had any funds left for carryover, they're giving us one year to spend them down. So I kind of have this year of almost stability, less funding than expected, but enough to make some decisions. And then, um, next year, it's a panic button, but we're figuring it out. We're working to institutionalize. We've asked for potential funding for some of it through the system. And then, um, the other thing that's really affecting us is the shutdown. So I have one grant that really should be continued, but I can't get ahold of a program officer because she's out of work to, uh, to approve that continuation. So, yeah, we're suffering, and it keeps me up at night. But so far, I've kept almost everyone employed that was employed here through a lot of scrambling.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Sakamoto. First up is US Representative Jill Takuta. Governor Green's representative.
Hello, I'm Diana Ko. Uh, Governor Green's monthly newsletter, Kiala Ho, I've given the board a link uh, to the October newsletter as well as to where you can sign up if you'd like to have it. At the last meeting, uh, this is a follow-up to a question or an issue posed by Councilmember Kim Tomy. She was talking about the short-term disability parking permit application and was a little frustrated that the process um, seemed inefficient, I think, to her. That's a accurate paraphrase and takes a bit long. So um, I'm giving you the state's side of the response. This comes from the Disability and Communications Access Board, or DCEAB. It has a parking committee which agrees the delay in being able to get an appointment is a concern, albeit out of its control. It sent the city on September 22nd a letter asking it to revert to allowing walk-ins via the express service option for disability parking permit applications, which would not require an appointment. And I've handed the board that letter. The city responded on September 25th that a seven to 12-day wait for an appointment is not unreasonable. It said it will take walk-ins as space allows. That letter also handed to the board for their reference. DCEAB says its board will review the aforementioned letter at its next meeting in November. It believes it lacks the ability to require the city to do this. It does not believe that statute, administrative rules, or memorandum of agreement. Um, it doesn't, it doesn't believe it has that within the counties to do that. It says it can ask its full board to initiate administrative rulemaking. Not a speedy process, but it tells me it's the only one available. That committee meets every two months, so next up will be November. Ms. Tomy is welcome to submit written or oral testimony. DCEAB's contact information provided also to the board. Um, third issue is the parking meter fee exemption law. That came up and there was a question asked by a woman who I think is a constituent on Zoom last time. Oh, you? Okay. Cert lady, vibrant Hawaii lady. Um, so she had asked why the parking meter fee exemption law was changed. DCEAB tells me this was a change to state law made in 2020, effective July 1st, 2021. The legislature made the change at DCEAB's board's request, removing the meter fee exemption for temporary placards, long-term placards, and special license plates and creating a new type of placard called the Disabled Paid Parking Exemption Permit, DPPEP. Hawaii became the fifth state to do this. There are about 17 states with no meter fee exemptions at all. Coordinator of Program and Policy Development, Brian Mick, says originally our disability parking permits did not provide any sort of exemption. Several permatees who could drive themselves were unable to reach or operate the meter and kept having to challenge citations for expired meters in court. The exemption was added to remove this barrier for them. He adds the decision to give a broad exemption to anyone with a parking permit created a financial incentive for abuse of the parking program, especially as on and off-street parking rates went up. Three ways this occurred are people obtained a placard under false pretenses, they got it issued to someone else, rather they used a placard issued to someone else, and people used their permit to park in a metered space but exceeded the payment exemption time limit. Mick also respectfully notes the person who asked the question was misremembering the exemption. She had said it was two times the posted limits. Uh, he says it was actually the first two and a half hours or the maximum time the meter allows, whichever was longer. That meant for most meters, it was the first two and a half hours, but then it became very hard to enforce. Since July 1st, 2021, the following people can obtain a DPPEP. A person who A, has a mobility disability, B, has a driver's license, and C, is certified by their doctor for one of the following. So there's three bullet points. The application cannot reach above the applicant's head to a height of 42 inches from the ground due to a lack of finger, hand, or upper extremity strength or mobility. The applicant cannot approach a parking meter due to use of a wheelchair or other mobility device. The applicant cannot manage, manipulate, and insert coins, bills, or cards in a parking meter or pay station due to a lack of fine motor control in both hands. The DPPEP can be used to park in a reserved accessible space or in a space where payment is made via a meter or unattended pay station for the first two and a half hours or the maximum time the meter allows, whichever is longer. In the four years since DCEAB has started issuing them, it has only issued 650, almost all to Oahu residents. And lastly, there was a PSA DCEAB provided, which ran in midweek a few times. So it was, I think, trying to tell me it made the effort to publicize this. That PSA also provided to the board. Thank you.
Of, of those, of those bullet points you listed off, um, you said has a driver's license and all of the other ones are and, 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 and? Meaning are they all concurrent or are any of those? To, in order to get the pass, you had to have this, this? And then you, one of the bullets was just simply a driver's license? Or did it include all of the other disabilities for reach and?
Let's see. These people can obtain it. A person who has A, mobility disability, B, has a driver's license, C, and is certified by their physician. So yes, it sounds like you have to have all three. And then item C says is certified by their physician for one of the following.
Got it.
And then it's either or on those three bullet points.
Okay, that's clear.
Very well.
Thank you. Any questions? Excellent. Thank you very much. Moving on to Mayor Rick Blangardi's representative. Mr. Kauanu.
Andy Kauanu again, Director of Budget and Fiscal Services, Mayor Blangardi's representative. There are about um, four items to follow up on. Two are just covered by Ms. Akol. We had a follow-up on maps for the disabled. Uh, what can the city do to help disabled residents access roadmaps? The Emergency Management Department reported back to us that the city continues to improve ADA accessible products, including maps. Currently, many of our maps are accompanied with written descriptions and are lists of what is shown on the map. Additionally, Emergency Management is investigating ways to increase accessibility, specifically evacuation routes to make these easier to understand. With regard to the postmortem after the July tsunami, uh, there was a Lessons Learned Public Hearing that council put on as a briefing on September 20, 25, 2025. Uh, and Emergency Management is preparing a final written report that should be published in the late October or November 2025 timeframe. Okay, uh, the final item, cybersecurity measures. Uh, I believe Mr. Sakamoto asked what is the status of cybersecurity measures following the attack on Oahu-Stranded Services that resulted in $300,000 of lost revenue from the bus? Essentially, uh, there has been no changes from the report that was um, published during the October 10th, 2024 Committee for Accessible Transportation. Uh, that um, was held. The report, uh, there's, there's a meeting, minutes posted uh, that can be accessed from that committee. Uh, essentially, uh, what was reported was that um, while $300,000 of lost revenue uh, was incurred by the bus, there were no lost revenues from the handy van operation. Uh, no ransom was paid. Uh, since most of the computers at the um, Oahu Transit Services offices were turned off, only a few were infiltrated. Uh, and uh, the computers were up and running again within about a week with um, updated software for protection purposes. Other than that, um, you know, there's nothing more to report on the situation. Uh, hopefully, um, the updated software provides better protection going forward. Uh, last comment, uh, establishing a disability commission. Mr. Sakamoto raised the issue of establishing a disability commission to address public needs and concerns for those disabled. We got a report back from the Department of Community Services that um, the Managing Director of the city is currently reviewing the potential functions and feasibility of the committee. And uh, we should be able to report back shortly. Take questions later.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And finally, Councilmember Esther Kiaino.
Good evening, everyone. I noticed my staff informed me that the agenda had me giving you an update on Bill 4054, 2025 relating to um, the proposed fare increases for public transit. As many of you know, the, we had a budget hearing on Tuesday and it was supposed to be the last committee hearing. Uh, the Chair of the Committee had proposed a CD2, which was opposed by the city's Department of Transportation Services. Uh, one, because it was charging a non-resident fare um, for passengers. Uh, second, it asked for a decrease in senior fares to $45, but it did not have parity with the others, which would be individuals with disabilities, Medicare cardholders, handy van eligible individuals, and low-income households. And lastly, they opposed it because uh, the CD2 had, the CD2 had proposed to change the eligibility threshold um, from individuals with extremely low income at 30% of the area meeting income to individuals with very low income. Um, there were some good provisions of the CD2 relating to um, uh, reverting back to uh, those who are um, care, uh, who take care, uh, who, I don't know what you, caretakers?
Personal caretaker.
Uh, who um, bring someone on to the public transit that they should be um, able to ride for free. Uh, so I, as a member of the Budget Committee, I had proposed that the Chair and Vice Chair, uh, work with the city administration to flush those issues out as well as the concerns expressed and to not move the bill. Um, I am anticipating that it will be revisited at the next budget hearing. And of course, um, Donald Sakamoto is always there for these hearings. So um, I think it's something that you guys need to watch closely. Uh, with regard to emergency preparedness, uh, we had a hearing at the Committee on Public Safety and Economy and thank you Neil for participating. Uh, on September 29th, it was a wide array of city departments besides Emergency Management. It included HBD, HFD, Department of Transportation Services, Department of Emergency Services, and the Honolulu Ocean Safety Department. Irene will be putting in the chat box the actual link to it. Um, and I apologize for being a little frustrated at the outset of the hearing. I think Director Collins knows that I have not been pleased with what I have seen. Uh, we only met uh, on Monday for the first time. Um, and I thought that their presentation was wanting. But having said that, uh, a lot of the other, um, the other agencies did a good job. And some of my concerns with regard to appropriate mapping and the Honolulu Action Alerts were already addressed by the Deputy Director. Uh, because I met with her about a month ago, uh, they did not have, uh, to me, the appropriate map links on their website. I believe that NOAA's maps are better because they're not interactive, they're stagnant, and you can know exactly where to go. And then I, I told them that the Honolulu Action Alerts, they all look alike. So unless you press it, you wouldn't have no idea there was a 7.9 earthquake somewhere. And they need to be better with regard to description. I don't know where Drake Passage is, right? In South America. How am I supposed to know that? Anyway, it's been greatly improved. And I, uh, in my meeting on Monday, I asked that, given the concerns on the Windward side, that I'd like to have within a month, I mean, six months, but I'm shooting for February, a town hall on emergency preparedness, uh, for all different types of emergencies, not just disasters. And um, I look forward to working with you guys to get your guidance on the appropriate venue. I would think that uh, something of that magnitude, if we do it right and involve the state, Haima, uh, that we'd probably get minimally 200 people there. And so I'd like to work with you. I know the North Shore has done, is in the process of working on theirs, but I look forward to working with you. So we're targeting February. Uh, with regard to the Charter Commission, um, you know, we actually had something on, what is today, Thursday? So we had something on Tuesday. I had a day off last night. But Tuesday, we had a um, town hall here, not a town hall, but the Charter Commission had hosted it and I went. So I need to tell you, November 7th is the deadline. And I, I'm not gonna, it is a hard deadline, but you don't need to be uh, panicky. You should get something in, but what's gonna happen is they're gonna have a vetting process. And uh, your proposals may or may not be on it, but throughout the whole process, which is gonna go for another six or nine months before uh, they determine what is gonna be considered, you're always going to have an opportunity. You could lobby the commissioners directly separate from that. You could lobby your council member. And uh, so I'm actually um, thinking of my own proposals. One which may be of interest to you is that uh, historic preservation, as you know, is a field that is very difficult to receive funding. And so uh, it was recommended by someone from Kanihohe, uh, Mahelani Safer, who is on the Oahu Historic Preservation Commission. And we are worried about a stable source of funding. Now, the clean, the city's Clean Water and Natural Lands Fund receives about $8 million annually from RPT, percentage of it. And they have about of between 35, meaning not backlog, but um, a surplus of 35 to 50 million dollars. So uh, what I'm gonna do is, it's a charter, it's under the charter. I will be uh, making a charter amendment to add historic preservation as an eligible um, activity under the fund. And um, it's gonna be a little tricky because we're dealing with acquisition of land, so I'm gonna figure it out. And uh, let's see. Lastly, uh, you know, we are all concerned about the maintenance of overgrown vegetation by, and um, as you know, Hiko has been actively involved in the community. Last month, we talked about Kulaoli Street. On October 8th, they trimmed vegetation encroaching on power lines along Kanihohe Bay Drive. And then um, this morning, they conducted poll inspections near Kanihohe Marine Corps Base to support the company's uh, wildfire mitigation efforts. I highly recommend, uh, similar to the community being actively involved on speed mitigation measures that you notify Hiko or my office, uh, on areas that you believe uh, has, have overgrowth so that we could all work together to um, to, to help with fire, fire mitigation efforts. And that's my um, report.
Any questions for those four representatives? Uh, Vice Chair, then Dale.
Hey Esther, uh, real quick, um, in terms of the Charter Commission, uh, I know you mentioned that there was a meeting two nights ago. Is there any other future meetings on this side of the island?
Uh, no, but there is going to be a uh, meeting on Monday at uh, Paniolo Hale, uh, the 20th at 2:30. And um, it will, people would be able to watch it via Zoom as well. Uh, because I'm going to be actively pursuing my amendment, I'm, I'm just like everybody else, I'm gonna have to fight for it. So every opportunity I'm given, I'm gonna go and try to massage it and see what kind of support. I will say this, it's like anything, any initiative you're trying to get through. What you should do is, once the board or any, any member or community member determines what they want, what they should do is um, get people to support because that's the way it's gonna work. Yeah. And um, and you don't need to be scared with regard to knowing how to finesse it. You can just throw out an idea and it is the commission's job to do that, right? They have staff and they have all of the members. In my case, because I'm In my case, because I'm going to be very picky about the actual verbiage, I'm actually going to go to the detail, go down to the detail about the exact verbiage that I want. And once I submit my proposal, I will be sharing it with the board, because I would like OKOa for you guys to consider.
Mahalo. Yes.
Dale Carstensen, I'm actually in Zone 5, two comments. First, consulperson Keina, and Neil, thank you very much for the time that you spent on the emergency recap. I think it's very important. We look forward to the final outcome from DEM. The next thing is to Andy. Andy, I know this is a touchy subject for many people, but it is regarding short-term vacation rentals, specifically in the Kanihoe area, in the zone that I reside, which is along Lilipuna and Kanaho Circle. There's been a number of times where we have reported illegal vacation rentals. We know it's difficult. At one time, when the department was first started under Mayor Blangiardi, there was four or five people that were working four-hour shifts, just trying to investigate one home, being that it's not done necessarily only in English, it can be in Korean, Japanese, Chinese, as we found. It takes time. My point, a couple of questions. What is the current staffing? And you may or may not be able to answer that right now. What is the current number of violations that have been given in the greater Kanihoe area? And what has been the collected taxes and transit accommodation tax that has been received? In your 2024-2025 budget recap, you listed $60 million was received from transit accommodation tax on the island of Oahu. I'd like to know how much of that is vacation rental. Thank you.
In terms of, I can only partially respond. Oahu Transit Accommodation Taxes, you know, in the aggregate, we collect close to $110 million a year. In terms of how much of that is related to short-term vacation rentals, I don't know the breakdown of that. It should be. I should be able to get that information from DPP, because they administer the program on a day-to-day basis. In terms of their current staffing, you're right. At the very beginning, there were four staff doing inspections, investigations. I'm not sure where they are today, I would have to get back to you on that as well.
It just seems like a very untapped resource of tax revenue that could be generated. Part A. Part B, there's local community members that are not happy having people come into their neighborhood every day that are different, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Sakamoto.
Thank you, Chair. My concern, Andy, thank you for the report about the bus revenue, but in October of 2024, I attended the City Council Infrastructure, Transportation, and Technology Committee meeting, and the chair at the time was Andrew Topola, and Robert Yu of Oahu Transit Services was asked how much revenue did they lose from that cyber attack? And he said $100,000. And then Director Martin, at the Honolulu Rate Commission, a few months before, I think it was March, but soon after, before that, said it was $300,000. So there's a discrepancy on that, so I just wanted to clarify that for you. But regarding the phone lines, September 3rd, Oahu Transit had a phone line service down from 9:30 in the morning to 9:30 at night, and people were calling me to ask what was going on. They couldn't get through HandiVAN, the lines were down. There was a phone number given out by Department of Transportation Services email blast and the news media, but a lot of people didn't get that, so I had the number to call. Then on October 12, 13, and yeah, last week, Friday, the 10, 11, and then the 12, the phone lines were down again, were busy, so people can't get through. There was a number released, and some people got it, some didn't, but I think there should be more communication out there to give the word out to the consumers so they can access the number quickly so they can schedule their rides, cancel their rides, or check on the estimated time of arrival. And Esther, thank you for bringing up the Bill 54. I testified at that meeting. Personal care attendant to be charged on the rail and the bus is unjust because they're going to pay $3.25 that bill goes through, where we pay like a dollar, I think it was a dollar 50, and then if you pay a cash fare, they'll charge 25 cents, so that'll be a dollar 35 for a senior or disabled person. But thank you for being at the rail, segment two. I was able to go to there, and I met Esther, Andy, a few others, the mayor, and it's wonderful that we have the rail continuing onto Middle Street. Hopefully, we'll get more ridership, and we'll continue on with the third phase, but it was a wonderful event. I was glad to go. Mayor invited me, and I rode the rail, and I rode it before when it first segmented. I hope it comes under budget and everything goes well, and hopefully, we can go to UH later so we can go to the UH football games, but thank you all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Moving on to Senator Keo Ho Kalole. Or Senator Awah.
Aloha, Mike Akol.
Aloha.
Makana representing Senator Awah's office. Just a couple updates. I believe last month, questions were raised upon Act 26, a jail diversion program, with a number of concerns being raised. We just wanted to give you guys a small update, that Senator Awah has joined a number of other senators that are looking into getting specific updates and working together to see what kind of improvement seemed to be made on this specific matter. So they don't have anything yet, unfortunately, to offer, but it's being worked on, and more information is, updates are being seeked so that we can have better clarity on how to move forward on that. And then... And then we also have our ginkgo ball project. Near, nearly 2,000 ginkgo balls so far will be depositing with the Waialua Elementary, as well as Kahului Elementary tomorrow in the Kahului Pond. And other update is the Kahului Air Laying Project with our ulu trees will be happening next Sunday, October 26th at 4:30 PM. That's all we got for you folks.
Mahalo. Next is Representative Kitagawa.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Just want to give a few updates. So still doing site visits in preparation for the upcoming session in January, and Makana just reminded me about that discussion we had last month about Act 26. And so we are getting more information from research to kind of get a better understanding and background of what's been sort of discussed already and what's, you know, come out through legislation and what changes can be made. And I know that on your agenda, you have a committee, I think, now that you've created, so we can make sure to provide that information to you more once we get that. And then just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Last month, I talked about the service fare that they do every month, and some people had questions that were interested in it. So there's actually one tomorrow, and it's going to be 10 to 12 at Kanihohe District Park. So I know homelessness has always been kind of a priority for the board, and so if you wanted to check out what kinds of services are at this fair that they do every month, it's tomorrow. And then I also wanted to just also mention another community event that's being done by Community Works in 96744. They do a community beautification day, it's coming up on Saturday. They start and check in is at Kanihohe District Park, and they go around Kanihohe and beautify the community. So they're always looking for volunteers. Their flyer will say the deadline passed, but from experience, they've allowed, you know, people to just come and show up that day to do some work. So I know that that's for the community, they're always interested in how can we make the community better, and so this might be an opportunity to do that. And then just a last thing, I don't know if it was mentioned already, and it's really not a state thing, it's run by the city and county of Honolulu, but Rep. Matioshi and I will be at a Halloween event at Kanihohe District Park next Friday. From, let me get the time, it'll be from 4 to 7. The city is doing this for the first time. It's sort of like a trick-or-treating event, and it's free to the public, and so please come out if you're looking for things to do with your kids. So I'll answer any questions after everyone else has thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Representative Matioshi.
Hi, aloha, everyone. I wanted to say that Punhilo BBQ was a huge success, so thank you to Artis and WCC for hosting that. My kids had a really good time. First time they rode a horse, I guess they're one of the people to have a first time ride, to ride the horse, but really great community event. I do hope that it happens next year, too. There was some discussion earlier about e-bikes being out of control, I completely agree. I'm going to be introducing a bill to ban e-bikes that can travel more than 20 miles an hour. Those are the more particularly dangerous ones, they're called Level 3s. There's going to be some other e-bike legislation coming through, but I just wanted to keep it short and simple for my bill, so it's definitely something I'm looking into. I've been working with one of my neighbors to, for on handicap legislation for people encroaching on handicap lanes, so I think Donald asked about that earlier. Unfortunately, the Disabilities Commission is against it right now, so we're waiting for, we're basically waiting, I drafted the bill, but we're waiting for the stakeholders to come to an agreement on exactly what the bill's going to say if we go forward with it at all. Other things I've been working on, the, you know, I've been particularly focused on scams, especially for Kupuna. It seems like every single person in our community knows someone who's been scammed, sometimes for quite a bit of money, and I want to get more information out there. I've been also working with the banks to try to stop it at the teller level. I've been working with cryptocurrency companies to stop the crypto ATMs from allowing people to be scammed through there. I know that's one of the common ones nowadays, to send the older person to put money into the crypto ATM. So we're working on that. There's, I'm going to have a public info briefing on, in December, calling law enforcement agencies, banks, everyone together to try to get information out there, but also to try to work on some legislation that we can pass. And the last thing I've been working on is a lot of insurance, insurance is out of control. So I've been working with DCCA and also the insurance companies to try to get better solutions to expand the supply of the market and drive down the costs of it. Donald, you had asked about an update on Hawaii State Hospital. There's no update at this time, unfortunately. I don't know if Rep. Kitagawa has any further information, but as far as I know, we've been following up with them, you know, it's in my district and, you know, bordering Rep. Kitagawa, so it's very much our concern, but we haven't heard any updates, but we'll update you if we hear anything else.
Thank you very much. Representative Lee. Senator Keo Ho Kalole.
Chair, members of the board, everyone, the community, aloha. Sorry I'm late. I'm not sure what was shared earlier, but I had had some conversations with legislative leaders and with the administration about the impacts of the federal shutdown, regardless of how we got here. On the state side, we are starting to feel impacts. There are over, there are over 1,000 workers that are, that work in state government that are paid through federal funds. It looks like they're, through the governor's ability to move money around, they did make payroll for this first half of the month cycle. If this shutdown persists in, through the end of the month, the state government will start to, we're going to be put in an awkward position to try and make ends meet as it relates to federal, state programs and personnel that are paid for with federal dollars. The most concerning one, well, there are two that are really concerning to me personally. The first is out of our control, it's paying our members of the military. Payday was on the 15th. You know, our understanding is that the federal administration found a way to make sure that payroll was meant for those individuals, but we have many, many federal workers in our district who are being ordered to work and are not, and are not being paid. Normally, that gets taken care of at the end of the shutdown. The thing that's really concerning to us is that SNAP benefits are facilitated by the state of Hawaii, but they're funded through the federal government, and unless there's a deal by the end of the month, SNAP accounts will not refill, which means EBT cards, food assistance for people will not be available if there's no resolution to the shutdown. The state of Hawaii does not have access to the actual funding mechanisms for these programs, so even if we found the $57 million that goes to food assistance to residents in Hawaii, the federal government actually controls that mechanism. So we're starting to put together contingencies for what happens if this persists into the year. Medicaid, Medicare, and Social Security are funded through the end of the year, but we are starting to, now that we're getting into the back half of the month, we are starting to unpack what the impacts are going to be to state services that are federally funded if this thing goes into November. It's pretty concerning. Also preparing for the legislative session, I think we've had this conversation over the years, if you're interested in pursuing legislation in the 2026 session that starts in January and runs to May, really, the period for me where you want to do your legislative work is between Labor Day and Thanksgiving. By the time you get to Thanksgiving, you really want to have a legislator who's committed to introduce your bill, to have a draft that's been worked up, to have a couple of drafts so that you have a pretty good concept, so that in the month of December, you can take it around and brief community on it. It's really difficult to negotiate language and put a concept together during the holidays. It's easier to just email out a draft of a bill and say, hey, take a look at it. So if anyone has questions or wants to work on projects, then please let me know. Now is the period, this fall period, where most legislators will circle back to the projects they worked on in the spring that didn't pass, and then start getting them ready for next year. The priorities for next year for me are consumer protection-oriented, like Representative Matioshi said, but also trying to figure out how we're going to address the impacts of the federal shutdown and then the slowdown in tourism and the short, the reduction in state revenues that we're starting to see right now. We're required to balance the budget in the state of Hawaii pursuant to the Constitution on a six-year financial plan. We have to maintain cash reserves and emergency reserve fund and do things, you know, responsibly and in a balanced format so that we maintain our credit rating so that we can borrow money for capital projects, that's school construction, roads, all of that. So if we see a downturn, if we're in a downturn now and revenues fall, then we're going to have hard decisions to make next year versus having discussions about what we're trying to, new things that we're trying to do. So can talk more about that. Happy to have a discussion with anybody about anything. Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of the representatives and the senators. Are there any questions? Sure. So Mr. Flytel, and then Mr. Sakamoto.
This is me, I'm directing it to you, might want to go to Dawn, don't know, okay? What is happening with the Hawaii Pacific University facility at Castle Junction? We need it desperately on the Windward side, and so, and I will tell you why, but I would like to know if you know what's going on with it.
Good question. The state appropriated funding to acquire the property last year, we did that at the end of the session last year. So the Department of Land and Natural Resources is currently in due diligence with Adventist Health Castle, who is the owner of the property. The Castle Foundation is also a party in that transaction because they own, they own a right of reversion if... if the property is transferred to an entity and that entity does not use the property for a charitable or educational purpose. So when the property was originally sold from the Castle Foundation to HPU, it was sold on the condition that if it was ever converted to a use not for educational or nonprofit purposes, that it would revert back to the foundation. So we're in a multi-year due diligence process for this acquire it from Adventist Health Castle with the approval, not necessarily approval, but just, just ensuring that it doesn't trigger that reversionary right. It's going to take longer than everybody wants. But HPU vacated the property last year. Adventist Health Castle was going to take full control of the campus and build a second medical campus. I think it was for oncology. They elected not to do that. And so the plan is to use that campus for conservation purposes and, and to utilize all the recreational spaces. But because the state of Hawaii is acquiring it, the due diligence process is intensive and it's going to take a while. I can get you much more detailed updates next month. I haven't checked in a while.
I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Sakamoto.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Representatives. Donald Sakamoto for the record. Jared, you know, I attended the October 1st Elections Commission meeting. It was like five and a half hours, 10:30 to about 5:30. The discussion was to have all mail-in ballots taken away and go back to having our precincts at the schools in one day. And, you know, Act 136 was passed in 2019 to have mail-in ballots. So it'd be convenient for people to vote. As a disabled person, I use electronic ballot as was other people online. So it's easy to use. But how, how would that be if they voted on it? So it's going to come to the legislature. What is the prognosis of that? Do they have a hearing or something so the public can give testimony to express their concerns about the change, to get feedback? And, yeah.
I, I, thank you for the question. I wasn't aware that the Election Commission took action on that. You're saying they passed a resolution recommending that the mail-in ballot, that mail-in ballots be repealed?
Repealed and then go back to the, you know how we used to have the schools at the precinct?
Right.
One day, and then we all go there, vote in person, show our ID and everything else. So that was passed by the board. I think it was like nine members. They had like five to four, I think it was. So it was passed. So I'm very concerned about that because as a National Federation of Line of Hawaii, we have people that use our, want to do it independently without having somebody do our vote ballot. But I just want to have brought that to your concern as, as well as the town hall meetings. You know, we used to have one before with Scott Matioshi in the heyday, but COVID came. I know other districts had their town hall, Chris Lee and whatnot, but it would be good if we can have a so we can express the communicating, express to you folks as was to the county. So we can do that sometime before the holidays, but if that can be done.
Yeah, I think we're working on a date. We have, we've been trying to put a date together, you know, to the Election Commission question. The Election Commission doesn't have the authority to change the law. The law was amended to authorize mail-in balloting. I would oppose a repeal of mail-in balloting. We've tried to push over the years to establish more early voting sites. I know that there is a request from a lot of people in the community who do not trust mail-in ballots, that there's a restoration of Election Day voting locations. I'm not against a limited number of those being put back in place. But I would oppose attempts to repeal mail-in balloting. There's no substantive evidence that any sort of fraud has taken place. And so I don't, you know, to me, the premise that there's mass fraud just hasn't been substantiated with any sort of convincing evidence. I do think it should be more accessible for people who want to vote in person to be able to do that. We did push for more, actually, so Senator Lee and I pushed for the establishment of that Dropbox in Kaniohi because we wanted one on the windward side. Because people on the neighbor islands don't understand that windward side, people don't like driving through the tunnels to drop off their, their ballots and, and the early voting location that's at the district park. So that's something that I think we're going to try and pursue this year. If we're in a tighter budget situation, it might be difficult. But we're not going back to every elementary school having a voter location anymore, in part because it wasn't a good system, because we were running out of election volunteers and we were having real trouble actually staffing those polling places. And, you know, we, we haven't seen some, we, we actually saw a bump in voter turnout after we initiated mail-in ballots. So that's my own personal stance on that. I'm not sure who would introduce the bill. And I would have to go back and look to see whether the Election Commission passed some sort of resolution. They don't, they don't have the force, the power of law to change the law. So I'll go check.
Yeah, and then what another thing is, you know, we had a survey or something.
Can I, can I reend on that too, before we move on?
Yeah. Please.
I, I, I don't, I don't think there's any way that's passing through the legislature, Donald. I, I, I'm actually kind of appalled that they even suggested repealing mail-in ballots. But yeah, like Jared said, there, there's no way we're, we're going back, both, both budget-wise and just practicality-wise. I'm not sure why people don't feel comfortable dropping their ballots off on, in a Dropbox when after they vote in person, they're dropping it in a box anyway at that location. I don't know if they think that people are breaking in at night or something, but I, I think that the structure that we have right now allows everyone who wants to vote to vote, unless they're trying to vote at 4:59 PM on the, like, you know, at the very deadline. And then you see that backlog. But if people have, people have early voting opportunities, mail-in ballot opportunities, they're filling out the same ballot and dropping it off in the Dropbox that they would in person. I mean, it's, it's kind of, it, it actually baffles me. I'm glad people want to vote, but there's no way we're getting rid of mail-in ballots. And then to move back to the HPU campus, Jared, do you know if, I, I heard that the state was going to be leasing the HPU campus during the due diligence period and using it for some kind of permitted thing? I know, I know the Department of Health offices got nixed because it didn't fall under the lease restriction, but I thought we were leasing it back for something? Is that, did that fly? We, we can.
So part of the due diligence process is Adventist Health Castle, when HPU left at the conclusion of the school year last year, Adventist Health was just left with the property, the full maintenance obligation and no tenant. So they were just losing money. And so I believe we entered into a short-term lease agreement where the state would come in and help them maintain the property. That's the biggest concern is that it's going to immediately start to fall into disrepair. It is a fantastically maintained property. And we don't want, we don't, and then we don't, we don't need, you know, the thing to just stay empty and then vagrants come in and mess the place up like they did with the Omega Station. So Representative Matioshi is right. And then we'll get you a more detailed update next month.
Sounds like that location is ripe for a public-private venture of some kind.
Well, it's, it's, so it's, if it's
relating to.
That we, we looked at first responder. There's, one of the, one of the proposals right now is to consolidate some of those DLNR operations. Their enforcement officers don't have a home base. Their invasive speech control offices are scattered all over the place. And their conservation officers have, there's a lot of opportunity with the entirety of the property that has not been utilized, like up in the, up in the woods and stuff. So base yard for essential DLNR operation, you know, they have foresters, they have firefighters. We don't talk about them. That is part of the conversation.
Okay, we're going to move on. Thanks, everyone. We, we've got some board business to get to. First off is the approval of the September meeting minutes. Are there any changes?
Correction.
Recommendations? Mr. Sakamoto.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a correction. A member Hewitt was online. I guess he didn't, maybe he was on the phone line, but I talked to him and he attended that meeting. So for the record, he was at the meeting. I don't know what time he came in, but he expressed that he was there.
And on page, page two, in the middle of the page, relating to dog park and phone issues. Chair Radke raised concerns about North Beach Dog Park fence being too high. That's incorrect. It was, it should read, raise concerns about North Beach Dog Park fence does not reach the ground, which if anybody's throwing a ball, goes outside the fence because the fence doesn't catch it. And real small diggy dogs can get out too, but don't have to put that in there. It's just an addition now that I'm thinking about. So yes, does not reach the ground and scratch out being too high five feet. Any other changes, recommendations? Any discussion? Motion to accept with those changes?
Second, by Sakamoto.
It's been moved, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Excellent. Progress. Let's talk about resolution regarding water access at Heia Pier. There is a resolution on in front of you. It's not available for Mr. Sakamoto, so I'm going to go ahead and read it. This is a resolution from our neighborhood board requesting the installation of freshwater rinse or shower facilities at Heia Pier. Whereas Heia, Heia State Pier is a popular public recreational facility in Kaniohi Bay that supports numerous community users, including paddlers, fishers, boaters, divers, visitors, and whereas the pier services serves as a launch point and training site for multiple canoe clubs and individual paddlers who utilize the pier daily for cultural, recreational and competitive activities. And whereas despite the high level of use and the physical exertion associated with paddling activities, there are currently no freshwater rinse or shower facilities available to the public at Heia State Pier. And whereas paddlers and other water users are exposed to brackish or saltwater conditions that can lead to skin irritation, bacterial growth and general hygiene challenges when no rinse facilities are provided. And whereas the lack of freshwater rinse facilities can discourage responsible use and maintenance of personal and club-owned equipment, increase the potential for environmental contamination from users attempting to rinse gear in the ocean and diminish the overall user experience of this important public resource. And whereas the other state-managed harbor and pier sites, including Alawai Harbor, Haleiva and Kihei Boat Ramp, have provided freshwater rinse or shower facilities for the safety, health and hygiene of users, demonstrating the feasibility of similar infrastructure at Heia State Pier. And whereas the Kaniohi community has expressed consistent support for improvements that sustain ocean access, cultural practice and environmental stewardship in Kaniohi Bay, including the provision of basic amenities that promote safe and responsible recreation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Kaniohi Neighborhood Board, Number 30, respectfully requests Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation to evaluate, plan and install appropriate freshwater rinse or shower facilities at Heia State Pier. And be it further resolved that this resolution be transmitted to the chairperson of the Board of Land and Natural Resources, the administrator of Dobar, the governor of the state of Hawaii and the state legislature delegation represent Kaniohi and the city and county of Honolulu, Department of Parks and Recreation, for information and coordination. And be it finally resolved that the Kaniohi Neighborhood Board, Number 30, stands ready to collaborate with DLNR, Dobar and community stakeholders to support the planning, design and maintenance of these facilities, ensuring alignment with community values, environmental sustainability and public health.
Well done, Mo.
Yeah, thank you.
Well rewritten, too.
Any discussion on this resolution?
Sakamoto, I'd like to thank the person that did the resolution.
I, I, I did that improperly. So could, could we have a motion to open discussion?
I motion to have a discussion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Without objection? Discussion, please? No discussion?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so this resolution, as it's now written, is absolutely wonderful. It speaks to the community concerns that were brought forth. I wish Auntie Rocky was here tonight. As a kayaker that uses this facility myself, I can speak to the need for this resolution to be passed. And previously, when we were putting the onus on the Kaniohi Canoe Club, making them responsible for all this, I thought that was unjust. And now we are looking to where we needed to go. And I, I, I urge everyone to vote in the affirmative ASAP.
Is there any other discussion?
Mo, please, Chair.
Yes, Dale.
I would just like to add, if we could, where we have, be it further resolved that this resolution be transmitted to the chairperson of the Board of Land and Natural Resources, dot, 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 dot. Could we also include the Kahalouu Neighborhood Board as well?
Yes. It'll be after Department of Parks and Recreation and Kahalouu Neighborhood Board? Any other discussion? Is there a motion to close the discussion?
Sakamoto motions to close the discussion.
Motioned and seconded, without objection? Is there a motion to, to approve this with the addition of and Kahalouu Neighborhood Board?
Sakamoto motions to approve with amendments with Kahalouu Neighborhood Board.
Been motioned and seconded? Voting on the board or voting on the resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstention? Hearing none. This resolution passes? Board participation in Kaniohi Christmas Parade. Have you had a chance to think about it since the last meeting? It's only been three and a half weeks.
Did you want to go through the empty homes tax resolution as well?
I'm sorry, the what?
The empty homes tax resolution as well. We had the presentation. We just have forum then, but just to see.
Whoever, whoever was the person that came late, didn't have a chance to hear the.
Okay.
We could, we could probably do it, but I'm not sure if somebody could complain that this person wasn't here to hear the whole thing.
Good point. That's fine.
Hold on just a second. We could probably do it and read the whole resolution. We'll just defer, we'll just defer that till, yep. Back to the Kaniohi Christmas Parade. Are we going to play? Yes. Are we going to do that again? Okay, music in the back of the truck.
Chair Sakamoto here. I, I enjoyed our last year's Christmas parade with your fantastic music.
That had a good, we had a good time. That was nice.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will, we will participate in the Christmas, in the Christmas parade. Excellent. Does somebody want to take the lead on that? Excellent. Board member Burbage? And now we get into the Christmas potluck, which is our December meeting. We have a wonderful venue to have it. We've got tables to set our food, a great place. Yes. We all. Yeah, that's right. We should. For those of you that are here, that didn't happen last year. We had a potluck planned and the school was closed. And so we went over to one of the board members' house and, and I don't know, 10 or 15 of us. Yeah, that's where we had the Christmas potluck. But we'll have it here. It's a great place to just shoot the breeze and just chat with everyone. We have a really light agenda. We just do the opening brief where the, the fire department says their. says their thing, the police department says their thing. Do we have the other? No, we just have, whoever's in that first group does their thing. Fire Department, Police Department, Marine Corps Base Hawaii, Windward Community College, and then we grind. Okay, somebody want to take charge of that? Again with you. Okay, taking on the lion's share. And even though Laura is taking this on, even though Laura's taking this on, and I heard Neil just said he would help her, that's exactly what I was asking, is if everybody could, when she asks for something, be on the spot, provide information, and we'll get this thing happening. Last item, Kaniohi People of the Year. If anybody has anybody to nominate, I'm going to close, close this board meeting and go into closed session so we can huddle, and then that way we're not announcing anybody to everybody. So does anybody have a nominee? Neil does. And Dale, you do too? Vice Chair? Nope? Anybody? Okay. This meeting is going into an executive session. Everybody gather.
Gather around, Donald. Okay, so all of you are out there listening, shh, don't pay attention.
Okay, we have returned from executive session, called back to order. Finally, we have committee reports and assignments. Are there any committee reports and assignments to be briefed?
Sakamoto.
Sakamoto, do it.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I attended the Committee Emergency Response Team on Tuesday with Marie, and we had a guest speaker from Hawaiian Electric, and they talked about emergency preparedness and everything. So that was wonderful to have a guest speaker, and that was at the senior center in Kaniohi. I also attended the Honolulu Rail segment, I was invited by Mayor Belangiari through Department of Transportation Services for the second Skyline opening, was wonderful. Ed Sniffin was there, two mayors, various mayors, and other people, dignitaries, Esther was there as well as Andy Kowano. And I hope the Skyline will get more ridership because it's costing us a lot of money, but of course, I testified at Bill 54, the rate increase, as was Bill 60. The Bill 60 is to extend the rail with the University of Hawaii. I think maybe we should hold off on that, but it's good discussion to have more people participate in those two bills.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Emergency preparedness.
Please, bring it.
Yes, so I did attend, I did testify both in writing and orally, the safety committee where, that Esther mentioned, and I thought it was actually a very productive meeting, although we did sort of nail the new director of them to the floor. And I have since met with him, as has Esther, and so that's an ongoing kind of a thing. Good. Anybody who's interested, I did send out to everyone my testimony if you really want to read it. Second, as was mentioned, Marie mentioned the Coolau Hub Symposium, which is, this is the second one. First one was when the Coolau Hub was a fledgling organization, which I am one of the original members. It was a really good day. If anyone is actually interested in attending, send me an email and I'll send you the flyer and with the QR code and how to register about that. With regard to the, the reason I brought up Hawaii Pacific University is actually the county wants, wanted to buy it, okay, in part to be used for emergency preparedness activities and as an operations center. That has been talked about, members of the city council and myself. So I know the state, exactly what Jared said, but they're sort of hemming and hawing and hemming and hawing, and as I understand, as I understand it, the county has budgeted the funds, at least for a portion of it. So I brought that up on purpose, anyway.
Well, thank you very much for that addendum to the emergency preparedness committee meeting. I'll have you, I appreciate your testimony, it was stellar and on point, and it's that kind of verbiage that gets people hopefully to start understanding and moving forward. So, well done. Any other reports? We have vacancies on the Education Committee, Haiku Stairs. If you've all had a chance to see the agenda and are looking at the committees, if your name is not listed properly, please let Rachel know and let me know, so we can have that updated and effective. If anybody's interested in serving on the Education Committee or the Haiku Stairs Committee, let us know. Next regular board meeting will be Thursday, November 20th, here at Windward Community College, Hale Aho. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Two minutes early.
Eight twenty-eight PM.